Click next to more or something. All right, Phil, I would say, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Borough Highland Park Regular Mayor and Council Meeting of August 18, 2020. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on July 16, 2020, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board of the Borough Hall at 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey on July 16, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Council President and Acting Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. The dial-in or Zoom information is on the Borough's website and published on the agenda. At this time, Councilwoman Stephanie Chohan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty, Justice, Burrow.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Burl Mettler. Councilwoman Canavera. Here. Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovere.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is our ninth virtual council meeting, and a recording of the proceedings will be made available via HPTV following the meeting. Is there a motion to approve minute regular and work session meetings of February 18, 2020, March 3, 2020, April 7, 2020, April 21, 2020, May 5, 2020, May 19, 2020, and June 9, 2020, and the special meeting of March 24, 2020, as distributed?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Council reports, I will start with the order on my screen with Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Happy summer, everyone. Hope you are all staying safe. The order of the day is to wear your face mask, social distancing, and just make sure everyone is safe away from that. That's it. We all just, our mandate is to, for all of us to be safe.
Councilman Hale?
I would just add that the mandate is to be safe, and also, as you're thinking about your purchases, remember Main Street Highland Park desperately needs your help in all aspects, the restaurants, the businesses. Come with your mask, but come with your dollars. It's very important that we do all we can to help our merchants in Highland Park. It's a tough time for them. They're working incredibly hard to stay afloat, and we need to support them as much as we can.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Board of Health presented at the latest deer management work session and gave their perspective. The Borough is also looking into a mental health initiative, and they held their first organizational meeting on August 13. Also, Board of Health has been working with the schools, and they have given their recommendations as it relates to the school reopening plans. The Borough has partnered with the Jewish Renaissance Medical Center to bring a mobile COVID testing site to town on Wednesday, August 26, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The testing site will be set up in the parking lot at the HP Community Center, 220 South Sixth Avenue, and can accommodate drive-up and walk-up clients with or without symptoms. Residents interested in taking advantage of this testing opportunity must register by Monday, August 24 That hyperlink can also be found on our Borough website and Facebook page. Residents who need assistance registering can call the community center at 732-819-0052. There will be no out-of-pocket calls to get tested. Clients with insurance will have their bill sent directly to their insurance company, and clients who are underinsured or uninsured will have their test covered by Medicare and the CARES funding. Board of Health is still working on their piece on racism from a public health standpoint. And last but not least, August is National Family Fun Month. So head down to Donaldson or Johnson Park for a picnic, or stay in and work on your TikTok dances like me. Either way, enjoy the rest of your summer, and that's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fine?
Yes, tonight I want to discuss history, remind our residents about volunteer opportunities, and make note of an upcoming celebration of art in the borough. In regard to history, the 19th Amendment, which granted all American women the right to vote, was passed by Congress on June 4, 1919. However, at least 36 states needed to vote in favor of the amendment for it to become law. The 19th Amendment was ratified 100 years ago today, on August 18, 1920. Accordingly, today, we remember and express gratitude to New Jersey's suffragists who moved our democracy forward and fought to guarantee the woman's right to vote. Women such as Antoinette Brown Blackwell, who helped found the New Jersey Women's Suffrage Association in 1867, Lilian Fiker of Plainfield, New Jersey, who served as president of the New Jersey Women's Suffrage Association from 1912 to 1920, and helped organize the New Jersey League of Woman Voters, and Alice Hawke of Mount Laurel, New Jersey, who began her work as a suffragist with the National American Women's Suffrage Association and was founder of the Congressional Union and the National Women's Party, which led picketing of the White House from 1917 to 1919 to fight for passage of the 19th Amendment. In terms of volunteer opportunities, please note that there are vacancies on our boards and commissions that are waiting to be filled. To all Highland Park residents who are interested in volunteering, please check the Borough's website for the list of boards and commissions, and fill out a volunteer application, which you may find online, and submit it to the Borough Clerk's office. Finally, there will be a dedication event celebrating and revealing the new Highland Park mural by Arts Commission student member Jessica Wu on the all-colors LLC building at 176 Woodbridge Avenue tomorrow, August 19, at 3:30 PM. That is my report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Canavera, you have a report?
I just want to let everybody know that the library is in the process of purchasing some new books for our children and for adults. Also, just like to point out, Main Street Highland Park is a great place for a cheap date night, get some food, some appetizers, sit on the tables or on the bench, and great time. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Canavera. Just have a brief report from Public Works. Everybody knows we got swept by two severe storms, which downed a lot of trees. Our DPW is working on removing the branches and the associated brush, so it is interfering with some of the traffic sometimes, some of the sidewalks, but a lot of it is getting cleared. There are still some to go. I remind everyone, there are only two more bulk trash pickups this month. One is tomorrow, and one is next Wednesday. So if you have bulk trash to pick up, please make a call, make an appointment. We're up to 25 appointments now, because we've found we're capable of taking a little bit extra. Please make sure you call down to the DPW office. I note that the final reading of the tree replacement ordinance is on for tonight. I thank STACK for their work in contributing to the information. I'd like to also mention that as to the Meadows Trail, the Sustainable Highland Park and the Environmental Commission are off for August, but down at the Meadows Trail, we also had a lot of storm damage, a lot of downed trees, which have disturbed a lot of the beds, but the four volunteers, we now have two extra, Andy Warren and Sue Edmonds are now volunteers, have been doing great work in cleaning up. Finally, there have been a lot of questions about the road closures for the PSENG repair project. There were meetings going back some time ago when the project was getting started, and some other repairs needed to be done. It appears that, in some cases, the information about closures is not trickling down from the top of the contractor and the company to the crew on the field, and Ms. Hovere has indicated that she'll be talking to try and get some closure on that. The project is moving ahead very rapidly, which is part of the problem. You know, other than the intermittent rainstorms, the weather's been great for their work. That's all the report I have. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just to build off your last point, I will follow up with PSENG to see if we can't get a quicker and more accurate list of which roads are going to be closed where in advance. I too struggle with that. I go home for lunch sometimes, and it takes me twice as long as it normally would. So I appreciate the inconvenience and the patience that residents are having with that process, and we will try to improve it. Speaking of roadways, we are also starting up on three of our road projects. This is through our kind of 2019 state aid grant program. Cherry Street, South Park Ave., South Fifth, South Eighth, and South Adelaide Ave. From Raritan all the way to the end, we'll be proceeding. The first phase is sewer work, so they'll do that, then they'll do other work, and then the last thing is they'll bring in the crew for milling and paving. Residents that live on those streets will receive notification from the Borough Engineers Office to let them know it's on its way. So just keep an eye out for those letters, as well as no parking signs when appropriate to accommodate the workers. But the expectation, based on the schedule, is that all of the construction will be complete by the end of September. Again, weather depending and problems in the field depending, but that's the schedule we have today. So we're looking forward to those. We also have another round of roads that have been authorized and approved from the state. We're working on the engineering now. I'm not sure, I should say, if we'll be able to get it engineered, approved by the state, and bid out for this year, but I am pushing hard for that. We're looking at South Sixth Avenue, Magnolia to Benner, South Ninth Avenue, Eden to Graham, North Ninth, Raritan to Abbott, Benner Street, South Seventh to South Ninth, North Fourth, Montgomery to Madison, Barnard Street, Woodbridge to Central. I'll make sure these get posted on the website, so if you didn't write that down really quickly, we'll get that up tomorrow if it's not already there. And then lastly, I think, going back to the first point about PSENG, the question I get, second to, can I, how do I find my house in this maze, is when are the roads going to get fixed? They will come in, and all the roads that have been hacked up for the gas line replacements will be reconstructed. My hope is this year before the end of the season, but they need to complete all that roadwork before they bring in their contractor to do all of the roads at once. So that's one of the things, the reason we're trying to move forward quickly on some of the gas line work, in addition to the safety and the infrastructure improvements, is we want to try to get the restoration work on the road surface done before the winter, but they're not going to bring a contractor in to do it piecemeal. So that's one of those dynamics we're managing. Just briefly wanted to touch on the fact that, as of July 1, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, our water sewer contract operation with Middlesex Water Company took effect. We have two of their personnel that are in town every day, Mike Rodriguez and Keith Husco. You may have seen a Middlesex water truck in town a little bit more than usual, and they have name badges, and you'll see Keith and Mike, and eventually, I know the Borough staff are getting to know them, and our residents are going to as well, as they are out in the field more and more. But do not be surprised if one of them knocks on your door if there's an issue they're trying to resolve with any related water issue. They are our operator for the system, but if you ever have any doubts, you can call Borough Hall and verify. But again, it's Mike Rodriguez and Keith Husco are our day-to-day folks in town working on the management of our system, and we'll have more to announce soon on some of the kind of frontburner projects we're working on, but we have a meeting coming up where we'll be going through those, and I'll report on those at that time. That's all I have tonight, Phil. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, do you have a Borough Attorney's report?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. We have no mayor's report tonight. So at this point in time, we're at the, our first public discussion period. 21 minutes total, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda, including the work session. So the total time allowed, again, is 21 minutes, and comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so with the second public comment session later in the meeting. Also note that there are a number of ordinances on tonight, and each of those ordinances, which is on for final reading, will have its own public comment sessions subject to the same rule. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has left. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak and be heard. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. On the virtual meeting, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in the Zoom application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you want to speak about a topic on the agenda, please now press star nine or the raise hand button. And Borough Administrator, please announce our first speaker if there is one.
Yes, and just to, I know this comes up, and we have 19 members in the public this evening. First one I have on the list with a hand raised is someone who's identified as Jeff. I've just allowed you to speak. You may have to unmute yourself. State your name and address, please.
This is Jeff Mordaro. I live on Wayne Street, Highland Park. I noticed on the agenda, and I had heard some indication, that the Equity Commission is now going to be renamed and re-designated as an Equity Council that reports to the mayor. And I don't, you know, I don't have anything to express on that point, but I do want to express my disappointment that there are no, I mean, there are basically no members being appointed to the Equity Commission tonight, and the Equity Council isn't going to be fully staffed. As I understood it, both at the meeting and in conversations with the mayor, this, you know, we were on track to staff the Equity Commission by today, by August. That was the commitment that was made, and now here we are, several weeks later. I see no progress, other than potentially renaming a commission that hasn't acted for about a year, because it has virtually no members. The people who are on the agenda as being appointed to the council, two of them are already on the Equity Commission, and I don't, I don't get it. I don't understand why it's so hard to put together or appoint eight members of this community, or however many there should be on this commission, so that they can meet and recommend actions to the police department, so we can address one of the most important issues that we're facing here in the borough. It just doesn't seem to be a priority, and I'm just very disappointed. It seems like an effort to just run out the clock on whatever we can do on police reform in this town. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. Next on my list is Peter Spool. I've now allowed you to speak. Please make sure you unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Peter Spool. I live at 146 Graham Street on the South Side. So I also want to address Draft Resolution 82232, which is a resolution to establish the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council. I'd have to say that the resolution is rather short and rather vague, and doesn't look like it's been very well thought out. I don't know why this is necessary, since the Equity Commission already existed and has quite a more detailed charter, which you can find online, Powers and Duties. It seems like this new council that is being proposed has a much more limited scope, and so I don't understand that. I'd also want to ask a question, and that is, if this new council is approved, will the meetings be open to the public and be in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act with agendas and meeting notes made public? Can anybody answer that question, please?
Borough Attorney?
Well, the new organization is an advisory council to the mayor. So as such, it has no decision-making power, and it's not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. So the agendas would not be, wouldn't necessarily be announced. They could be, they don't have to be, and that's how that advisory council will work.
So that's very sad, that that would be not transparent at all. This is another example where the Borough is doing things to make things that were transparent less transparent, rather than going in the other direction. That is a very poor example, I think. Very sad.
Well, if I may, the main reason that these matters are adjourned to the September 1 meeting is because the mayor is not present. I believe that, even though, as an advisory committee, a council, Borough Attorney is correct, I believe that they would function at the direction of the mayor in open session. But I just want to note, for anyone else who has a comment, that the reason that the mayor is not here tonight and was the centerpiece of the discussions in reformulating this, so on September 1, we should have the resolution of all those matters.
I don't see, again, the reason for this substitution, which is what it looks like. Looks like a bait and switch to me, one which is less transparent, and I just want to be on the record on that. Thank you.
Next person is Anna Halen. I've unmuted you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Anna Halen. I live on 235 Montgomery Street. So a couple of things today. First, I'd like to comment on the deer feeding ban. So I agree that people shouldn't feed deer. Like, that's good. However, the language in this ordinance, which you're about to pass into law, has got me worried, because some of the facts, so-called facts that you present in support of the ordinance, are not backed up by data. For example, you claim that Highland Park is experiencing a significant increase in its deer population, and I wonder where is the data that supports this claim? Because as far as I know, there has only been one deer survey done, and it has actually been shown that people's estimates of how many deer there are in a certain area, those are highly correlated with the number of conflicts they experience, or are told that people experience, and it doesn't necessarily correlate with the actual number of deer. So that's why I wanted to ask you all, and it would be nice if I could get a reply, what actual data you have to support that claim? And if you don't have that data, why do you think it's appropriate to include it as a fact in this ordinance? And the second point is that you're also claiming that deer are endangering motorists. And in fact, the Division of Fish and Wildlife told you during their presentation that this is a non-issue in Highland Park. So for us, this is not a reason to take any action at all with respect to deer. So my question to you would again be, why are you including this as a fact when it is, like, when it's not true? And as an aside, I have noticed that it's actually motorists who endanger deer and not the other way around, because I have seen myself how people drive recklessly here in Highland Park, and they don't look out for animals. Like, if you see a deer crossing the road, you have to slow down, because there's a big chance that more deer are coming. And it's the same with children. Like, if you see a kid crossing the street, you need to slow down, because more might be coming. I don't know, people have to learn to drive defensively in residential areas. There's like no reason at all to be speeding anywhere, like in Highland Park. So the council, like, you don't need these so-called, I don't know, made-up facts, if I may say that, in order to motivate a ban on feeding deer. It's enough to just say that people in Highland Park have experienced conflicts with deer, and since feeding deer will make them accustomed to humans, there's a risk that more people will experience conflicts of the type that has been reported so far. So.
30 seconds.
Thank you. A feeding ban is just like one of the non-lethal ways in which we can reduce such conflicts. So like, that's all the motivation you need. And second, I also wanted to ask why the mayor, who is not here, is dissolving the Equity Commission and then making it less transparent? Because from my understanding, the mayor was supposed to fill the positions in the Equity Commission, and that hasn't happened for a really, really long time, so if there's any, thank you.
Phil, should I go to the next person?
Yes.
Next person on the list, Ravit Duncan. I've unmuted you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, thank you, Ravit Duncan. I live on Lawrence Ave. Two points I'd like to make. One is, building on what prior folks have said regarding the change to the Equity Advisory Council, making it more limited in scope, less transparent. It's also not clear, and this is a question, whether the, where this new advisory council would be able to propose changes directly to the council, or whether it has to go through the mayor, which could result in conflict of interest and suggestions and advice not actually getting to the council and being acted upon. Second point relates to the deer. Following on what Anna said, I think it's a wonderful idea to ban feeding. It's a great start to an alternative, non-lethal pathway of dealing with deer conflict, and I think that Councilwoman Foster Dublin had some really great points about what she saw with people feeding the deer in areas that, in the last work session, the Meadows folks complained that that's where the deer are eating. So thank you for that, Councilwoman. I think that there is an issue with language. The current language of the ordinance in the beginning is misleading and misrepresents the fact. As Anna has said, the problem is not deer population. You only have one data point. That's not enough to make claims about change over time. The argument that you're comparing it to pre-colonial densities is just not sensible. A lot has changed since then. There's been tremendous reduction in deer habitat, which means that the existing deer are now confined to a smaller space, which is obviously going to result in higher density. It doesn't actually mean an increase in absolute deer numbers. The main problem is deer conflict. That was the original complaint when this process was started. The second clause is also not substantiated by data, other than anecdotal accounts. There's no systematic evidence to link deer and plant damage, and even Fish and Wildlife said that the accidents do have not increased, and that that claim is just not relevant to Highland Park. So the language here needs to be amended to state something like, whereas residents of Highland Park have
30 seconds.
Conflicts with deer and conflicts with deer, and name the actual conflicts that were presented in June, and whereas these conflicts occurring in residential areas are in large part due to human behavior and lack of understanding of deer behavior. And then the rest can stay as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person up, Council President, is Elena Gerstman. Elena, I have unmuted you.
Thank you. Hi, this is Elena Gerstman. I'm at North Sixth Avenue. I am a proud Highland Park resident. I've put two kids through the school system. I volunteered for the town. But today, I'm really disappointed and I want to talk about the Equity Council that the mayor wants to do. And Mr. George, I know that you said it's in the September agenda, but it currently is on the consent agenda, which surprises me that such a big thing would be on the consent agenda as opposed to an open agenda. And I just want to remind you all that at the June meeting, the council spent time talking about the commission, right? You wanted to make changes. A lot of people came to the meeting. You guys listened to people, then you said you were going to appoint the new members. And Councilwoman Kim Chonan was leading that, I think, doing a good job committing to the public. And now today, we we see that the mayor wants to change course yet again. And it, to me, it's just kicking the can down the road. And to me, I have so much faith in this council. You want to do a good job. You're motivated to do a good job. I believe you're all fair people who want to bring racial justice to to Highland Park. But my patience is wearing so thin because it's in front of you and you keep shooting yourself in the foot because you're not appointing members of the commission. You kicked, you shot yourself in the foot last year by not appointing the members when people resigned. You then wanted to make a change to it. You committed to us in June that you would not make that change, but that you would appoint people. And now yet again, the mayor's changing course. And it looks like you guys are going to allow her to do that, which means you all go down in the books as not being on the right side of history. You're taking something away from Councilwoman Kim Chonan and you're letting the mayor create council instead of a commission that can do its work behind closed doors with fewer people in a town that is asking and begging you, begging you to take leadership here, and you're not doing it. And I'm asking you today, why should we trust you when you committed to something in June and two months later, you have changed and you're doing something else? I'm done with my time. Thank you for listening.
Next person is Dan Beatty. If I'm reading your name correctly, please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan Beatty, 304 Montgomery Street. I wanted to echo the concerns of the community with respect to creating Equity Advisory Council. I think, given the the turn at the June meeting and with starting to imagine this as possibly a civilian review board with the number of applications that I know have come through with populating this committee to now change course once again after not populating it from back in October when applications were coming in, I think is actually just a very wrong course in terms of where this is coming from. And specifically with respect to the fact that the Advisory Council wouldn't be under the Sunshine Law. So it would be up to the mayor to make these public rather than the law making these accessible minutes and so forth. It actually removes the council body out of this process and makes those recommendations directly to the mayor, which means that the council isn't necessarily reviewing those recommendations. I think one of the other pieces is, as Peter Spool mentioned, that it's very vague right now. It doesn't mention police data. It doesn't mention that they're ahead of responsibility in analyzing that data. It mentions that they would have some say in police training, but that police training should be informed by the data in policing. And so if they're not having access to data and analyzing that data, it's not clear that they have much basis to recommend trainings for the police department for. And so in moving from the Highland Park Equity Commission to this Advisory Council, the Equity Commission has a clear mission about for it. And this seems like a very unclear beginning for for this council. And so I think I think it should be rethought. I think it reflects poorly on transparency transparency in the community. And I think it reflects poorly on actually taking the disparities in policing that the Use of Force
Thirty seconds.
report mentioned that your own report in terms of DeLacy Davis raised. And so I would urge the council to reconsider. The last point I want to make is actually to council member Fine in saying that not all women were allowed to vote 100 years ago, that that was white women. And I think that's an important distinction to be made. And it's a mistake that gets made about that often. Thank you.
All right. One, it looks like I have one last person with a hand raised. Tatiana, please state your first and last name and your address.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm Tatiana Gelf on 118 North Fifth Avenue. I don't want to repeat what the previous two residents mentioned in regards to the deer feeding ordinance. And I also sent emails with the details on my comments to the proposed draft. I just want to point out that, yeah, besides the significant growth in deer population and the car accidents, which are mentioned in the draft, there is also, like a strange and irrelevant phrase, increasing risk of disease transmission. This was addressed by the Representative Jay Grossen from Board of Health. So it's strange that it appears in this draft. Besides this, I also want to, yeah, there is also native plant issue. And in my opinion, native plants in the meadows and natural preserve can be easily and cheaply protected from deer, just as this is done in many other communities and small gardens. And I I pointed out what is done and what events are done by Native Plant Society of New Jersey. And actually, I discussed with many people in Highland Park and they all would welcome and highly praised what I suggested to do to kind of increase the native plants and go in this direction. And killing deer or any other similar measures proposed by Department of Fish and Wildlife are completely irrelevant. Yeah, as to the paragraph about the Department of Fish and Wildlife, which starts as advised by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, prohibition of feeding deer, I'm kind of using my words to make it shorter, is an essential component to a successful deer management program, which was their proposed hunt. So my question is, why in this specific and particular Highland Park deer feeding ordinance, which is a very great thing to do? Why is the
Hello? Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. Why is the Department of Fish and Wildlife is is kind of advising? And it almost looks like the the council is starting moving towards their plan, which was not approved yet, and residents have a lot of discussions and arguments about this. So I would like to have this addressed one way or the other because I keep sending emails and calling and no one responded to me. Thank you very much.
All right, so that was the last person. And I will note that we hit our our 21-minute mark exactly.
I thank everyone for their comments. Clerk, will you report on the advertising notification of the Main Street Highland Park 2020 budget?
The 2020 Main Street Highland Park budget was introduced and approved on first reading on July 21st, 2020. A summary was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on Saturday, July 25th, with the public hearing scheduled for August 18th, 2020. Copies of the budget were made available to the public in Borough Hall, the Highland Park Library, and on the Borough website.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to take up the Main Street 2020 budget on final reading by title?
So moved.
Public hearing? Ms. Overe, are there any?
I don't see anybody, but maybe I'll just prompt people. If you want to comment, you need to either press star nine or use the raise hand button on your application for Zoom. Council President, I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Terry. Hearing no members of the public, the public hearing is closed. Is there a resolution to adopt the Main Street Highland Park 2020 budget on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Can I show my face for this?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Approve.
Councilman Fine?
You're on mute, Judge.
Josh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I have to say, Main Street has done a great job in coping with the pandemic and terrible restrictions on local business and their planning has been just beyond reproach. I congratulate them and I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
I I just can't say enough about the work that Rebecca and her team has done to try and and do everything they can to help. And I just, I hope everybody knows how hard she's working and how hard Javier is working.
Matt, you have been so helpful to us. I just want to thank you also. You've been great. Even working with you has been great.
Thank you. But it's, I I just, I I really think that we should be proud of all the things that that Main Street Highland Park has been doing, adjusting and fixing. And this budget is a representation of that. And I absolutely vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you report on advertising the amendments to the tree removal and protection ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park amending Chapter 388 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning tree removal and protection was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Is there a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Tagging.
Ms. Overe, was there a public comment? Waiting for the three amendments to the tree
Okay, again, raise your hand using the star nine or the raise hand feature if you'd like to make comment on this ordinance before it's voted on. I do not see anybody.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Is there a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I can go to my mayor. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Stack and Public Works did a great job in working with administration on this. Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Motion passes. Will the clerk please report on advertising the ordinance authorizing acceptance of a site triangle easement for 31 River Road for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park authorizing acceptance of a non-exclusive easement over Block 183, Lot 24, as shown on the official tax map pursuant to NJSA 48:1 at set, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Is there a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public hearing? Any members of the public wishing to speak?
Please raise your hand as previously instructed. I don't see anybody.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Is there a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you report advertising the salary ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Is there a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Back there, a second.
Is there anyone for a public hearing? Raise your hand or press star nine to raise your hand.
I see no one indicating.
There being no members of the public to speak, public hearing is closed. Is there a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
And the final hearing on that, I believe, will be on September 1st.
No.
I'm sorry?
That was approved.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Now we're up to intros.
Okay. Number 13, Madam Clerk, would you report the introduction of the ordinance to prohibit the feeding of deer for consideration of passage of first reading by title?
You skipped one.
Oh, the fire department, that's the one I was going to do. Would you report the introduction of the ordinance to amend the fire department ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Okay. An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park by removing and replacing Chapter 39 has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Is there a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading?
Motion to adopt. In just a little bit, it's just that we're trying to get everything up into compliance. And a lot of the ordinances that was there is has been updated for many, many years. So this is just to keep everyone assigned to what their responsibilities are and to stay in compliance with state and federal laws.
Mr. Council President, can I just have a point of order quickly to? Could you just explain to the public the difference between the first set of bills that we were doing? We were voting for passage and this is the first reading? I just want to make sure everybody understands the distinction between the two with these these coming up.
Yes, I will. And subject to any corrections by the Borough Attorney, an ordinance to be passed, once it reaches council action, requires two introductions to end. The first is called an introduction by on first reading. That requires it to be published on the agenda ahead of time. And then the clerk has to advertise it in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and Title 40 of the Stat States Actuits Regarding Adoption of Ordinances. There is no public discussion at the first reading on the consideration of the actual ordinance itself because it is required to be advertised so that people can see it, read it, think about it, and then have time to comment at the second reading. You've heard us call the the back You've heard us call the batch that we just talked about, final reading by title. That's when the public hearing occurs. There is a separate public hearing, separate from the intro, the first public reading, and separate from, I'm sorry, public comment, and separate from the second session that we have that lasts until at least nine o'clock. And that is the process set by statute so that there is adequate time to publicize it for people to read it and be able to come to a meeting and comment on it. So the ones that we're introducing now are first reading, there is no public discussion on them because there will be a public discussion down the road on their second, their second introduction. It's called a final, final introduction. And that's the difference between the two. That doesn't mean that you can't discuss it during the general public session, but please be reminded that there is a separate and specific public discussion directly to these ordinances when they come on for second reading.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You still need a second.
Yes, I was still waiting for.
Second.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Number 13, Madam Clerk, will you please report on the introduction of an ordinance to prohibit the feeding of deer for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending Chapter 165, disorderly conduct of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park to prohibit the feeding of deer, has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Before I call for a vote, can I ask a question of the Borough Attorney?
Yes, sir.
The beginning paragraphs that were commented upon by the public all begin with the word whereas. Are they actually a part of the ordinance when it goes into the code book? Or are they just introductory and, you know, saying why the legislation is being passed?
Mr. President, it's the latter. In other words, the whereases are an attempt to explain to the public one or some of the purposes behind the ordinance. But the actual language that goes into the code book is after the whereases are completed and then the text of the ordinance is considered for adoption. The whereases can be changed or deleted entirely if that's your preference, player.
So in other words, that what goes in the code book and becomes the ordinance, it starts with the words, quote, "No person shall purposely or knowingly."
Correct.
Then we could delete all the whereas clauses. We have to keep the now therefore because that's the law, but we could delete the whereas clauses?
Yes, you can.
I move the introduction of the ordinance prohibiting the feeding of deer with a deletion of the three whereas clauses.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Not sure about removing the whereases. So I'm gonna abstain on the whereas, I wanted to read it as it is.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
That'll be for second reading when scheduled. Madam Clerk, as.
I have a real, real quick on that, Phil. So the second reading now, will, the whereas will be removed or?
Yes, what we would do tomorrow, I will send a revised version of the ordinance, which was just introduced on first reading, deleting all the whereas clauses. So when Joan publishes that, there will be no whereas, it will just be now therefore be ordained.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And I would note that the reason I asked for that amendment now is because the, to reduce the, the language to be published and not have to re-advertise a second time, which is a cost to the Borough. Madam Clerk, would you report on introduction of the amendment to Chapter 9 Boards, Committees, and Commissions? Is there a motion with regard to this item?
Um, yes, Council President. I make a motion to table this item into the next meeting since the mayor isn't here. And I just want to, since Equity Commission wa, well is in my, in my portfolio now, I just wanted to comment on the Equity Commission. So I've heard everyone's comments and concerns and really appreciate all the emails and feedback. And so when I, back in June, I had said I was gonna interview everyone that had applied last year and even before that, when Councilman Hale was the liaison, all of that happened. Even as far back as Councilman Hale, you guys remember as of last year, there was a lot of like, I guess, miscommunication, who said this and who said that? Now that, when, when I now have this in my portfolio. And now that we were at the point, I had interviewed all of the applicants, so the mayor wanted the commission to represent the town, I guess, a more diverse commission to represent the entire town. And that, that's the, that's what she was looking for. I think we both have the same expectations, but instead of, we were, this is in the beginning process of trying to, you know, revitalize this commission. And I thought, instead of going back and forth and trying to go back out and fish for these eight residents that, you know, we would, basically everyone would agree on, because as you all know, the mayor appoints, we send over our people, but the mayor has the final say as to who will be on the committees or commissions. I had discussed it at my standing committee, which is two other council members, to actually put this committee under the mayor. And since this committee actually works a lot with the, a lot of police issues, the police department, the mayor, as you guys know, the chief reports to the mayor, and she, her actual title on with public safety is like civilian liaison or something, something. I'm not sure of the actual title. So I thought this would streamline more information and work could actually start, we can actually start moving on this. It's, next month will be September, and I've had this committee commissioned since the beginning of the year, and I just wanted them to start working. So it actually wasn't the mayor. I do have to say, I did not realize that making it advisory mayor's council that it would remove the sunshine law. So I don't know if we can discuss that to make some kind of, I don't know, exception or put maybe the council can put, the mayor's advisory council can put something maybe in their bylaws. I'm, I'm not sure, maybe we can discuss that. But this item actually should have been on our work session, not up for a vote. That was also our mistake. So next, next month, when the mayor comes back, she can discuss. I can't speak for her anymore than that, but that was the thinking behind the move. And basically, it was kind of like a lot of cooks in the kitchen and no work was being really done. And I felt this was a better way to streamline and get this work done. So I make a motion to table the ordinance, number 15, to September 1st.
Second. The second, that, that motion, and I just want to add to that as well, Stephanie, that, that I do agree that when the, when the applications that came in, it did not reflect the diversity of Highland Park, not that we're gonna have that, but I think that if we're talking about equity and we're talking about fairness and we're talking about Black Lives Matters, I think that it should have some kind of reflection of the makeup of Highland Park, of who we are in Highland Park. So it's not one set or one group of people telling other people what to do, but it's a diversity of people having a conversation and people at that table that look like the makeup of our town. And I think that the goal, that was the goal that the mayor was striving for, to make it inclusive and to make sure it represents the mosaic of Highland Park. And the mayor is the appropriate authority over the chief and the police department. So that was a part of her wheel. Well, it's also a part of my wheel, with the police department. And I think that if we're looking at this, it's to say fairness and equity, not just in, in the police department, because we have a lot of residents that call the police and black folks all the time, and they're not cops. And so if people want to be really introspective, they can start looking at themselves as it comes to fairness, as it, as it pertains to equity. Equity is making sure that each person have a place at that table, and this is what we're, the goal is trying to do, and to lend a voice to fairness in town and outside of town. With that, I second it.
Roll call. Do we need a roll call on the tabling?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we should have that.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Definitely.
Councilman George?
I'll have a lot to say about equity, having lived with those issues for 25 years in Highland Park. And equity includes more than the popular police relations. It includes housing, rent, sales, retail, and training of our residents in what equity means as well. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yeah, I just would want to echo what Councilwoman Kim Cho Han and Foster Dublin said, is that this is an attempt to make the process of bringing a diverse group of people that the mayor appoints to the Equity Commission. You know, when I was in, in, this was in my bucket, I sent forward names in January. There was a lot of discussion about when they would be appointed. We had a lot of discussion back and forth. The mayors made the decision, and I think probably rightly, that this should be a diverse body. And as a result, it does under, it is, it is best served under her bucket, I believe. I do also want to mention, and again, if this is a question or a way, if there is a way that this commission could be subject or be assured that this is open and transparent, I, I think that's certainly something that I was expecting when the, this was brought forward, that I thought that this would be under the, the same rules as other, other committees, and I think it ought to be. So I don't know if there's a way of making that happen. I think we should think about that. And as a result, I certainly think that tabling this to the next session is, is certainly in order. So with that, I, I vote yes to table.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes. Yes.
All right. The motion to table carries. I should point out that I also will be pushing very strenuously to make sure this is covered by the Open Public Meetings Act. Number 15, Madam Clerk, would you report on introduction of the ordinance reconstituting the Human Relations Commission for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance reconstituting the Borough of Highland Park Human Relations Commission amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Health and Human Services Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Is there a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second. Would there be a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Having worked with Commission for Human Relations, it's a great commission, I vote yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Before I vote, I just want to mention, this is adding the anti-Semitism committee that we spoke about probably almost a year ago. So government is that slow, and this is actually moving the Immigration and Refugee Task Force into Human Relations as well as a subcommittee of them. So we welcome them. HRC has been waiting for this moment and looking forward to the new applicants for the anti-Semitism resolution.
If I could just, standing committee, not subcommittee.
Stand, yes, stand.
Thank you.
I know those words can be very tricky, sorry. And I vote yes.
Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of matters which are considered not to require first and second readings as an ordinance and routine in nature. They are numbers 16 through 26. Is there a motion?
Seventeen. Seventeen through 27.
Okay, maybe I have a different version.
Phil?
Yes.
If we could first, if you could speak short to remove item number 25, which is the resolution to establish the mayor's equity advisor council.
Okay. Any objections? Removing Resolution 8-20-232, establishing the Equity Council from the Consent Act.
I think Terry has a.
I don't have an objection. I'm sorry, I realize I raised my hand at an opportune time. I know I second.
I would like to remove, I don't know if they're mismarked, it's Resolution 8-20-227 to approve the fall 2023 planning project. We're simply working on some of the proposals, and we need a little more work on that.
So 20 and 25.
With those two removed, with those two removals, is there a motion on the Consent Act?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I just want to comment for the Arts Commission, they always make sure they apply for the grants and try to help us out and still try to make their art come to life. And they're artists, so they don't fill out, you know, grant applications. So they really go outside their box to do this, and they've been doing it for a long time. So thank you, Arts Commission. And Josh? Yes.
So on the mayoral appointments, will, is there a motion to remove on the Equity Council appointments?
Second.
With the remainder of the appointments, the mayor appoints Metro Lundie as the alternate one to the Human Relations Commission, and John Maron and. one to the Human Relations Commission and John Marin and Amy Pollock, uh Pollock, who are um currently members of the Arts Commission, their term is up for reappointment to the Arts Commission. Is there a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Uh the mayor appoints Khalidra Hazadi as alternate number two to the planning board. No confirmation is necessary. This brings us to the second public comments period. It is eight thirteen. There are three minutes per speaker on any item, subject to the nine P M conclusion prior to the work session. Each speaker has three minutes but can comment on any topic. The borough clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning and then indicate when three minutes is left. The session will wrap up at nine P M. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on the Zoom application. The borough administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you'd like to speak about any topic, please star nine or raise hand button now. And borough administrator, uh would you please tell us uh for speaker?
Uh council president, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
You give another minute and check. All right, seeing, close the public session. Um is any, it's uh eight fifteen. Does anyone want a short recess before the work session? Or shall we continue? What's your pleasure, council?
Continue.
Continue.
Okay, let's move on to the work session items. No formal action will be taken uh during on any item on the work session. Um as you may or may know, uh they these are items in progress, uh which have uh come forward for council to discuss. They're done in public, so you can hear our general discussion. It can be a little more freewheeling than the formality of the regular calendar. Uh and the person uh presenting will discuss and council can ask questions regarding the matters. The first one is support of Assembly four-two-two-six and Assembly four-zero-three-four regarding eviction protections. Councilman Hale?
Yeah, I just wanted to to let everybody know that these two have passed the assembly. Um there is companion bills within the Senate um that um that that would be more germane for us if we were to support the Senate bills and the Assembly bill at our next meeting. Um as I said before, um you know, these these two bills are designed to um when the COVID emergency is over, there is a um that that's when the clock starts ticking on evictions. And and when it's declared, there are ninety days um to to where you can't evict under current law. What this bill does is lay out a process after those ninety days um for um moving forward with both evictions and mortgage foreclosures. Um prior to the introduction of this bill, on day ninety-one, um they the in 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 theory anyway, someone could be evicted. Um and as a result, um the 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 three-month process um is is uh seen by, I think, by many as as sort of a harsh um uh um time period. And so the goal of this bill is not to eliminate evictions. The goal of this bill is not to stop foreclosures. Those may still happen and those can still happen. The goal of this bill is to make sure that there is a process um by which evictions and um foreclosures um start after the ninety days is over of the COVID emergency. Um between now and the next meeting, I will be circulating a a a specific resolution of support um for the Senate and the Assembly bill, um along with texts of those bills to the council members. Um I think this is a kind of a of a of a no-brainer for us is is certainly something protecting renters. And we have a number of renters, a number of people in Highland Park um uh who would who would be helped by this bill. Um I'm happy to entertain any questions, um but I just wanted the council to know that I'll be circulating a the the Senate companions to these bills um uh and and as well, um and asking for the support for that, so.
Councilman, can I, can I ask, do you know that uh the Assembly bills have passed? What's the status in the Senate? And if you don't know right now, when you send out the resolutions, can you let us know the status at that time?
So the as as you know, the end of the summer is the end of the summer and everybody's down the shore. So there's not a lot going on um on that front. But my my understanding is that is in in September, it will move quickly through the um through the Senate uh appropriate Senate committees. My guess is that it will change to some extent. We'll have to watch some of those changes. Um but it does have a commitment from the Senate leadership as well as from the governor, um at least uh in in general commitment. So um hopefully it'll be very similar to that, so.
Great. Thank you, councilman. Are there any other questions on uh A two twenty-four, A four oh three-four?
Elsie has a one.
Um so the the bill that that is being proposed that that's in the Assembly now and hopefully will get to the Senate and we'll we'll get all the signatures that's necessary, you know, to support everyone who are who who is out of work. Um can landlords, because I've heard of some, someone said to me that the landlords are forcing them out, although this bill is being in the works and the governor had put in a a mandate that you could not evict people during this COVID season, I have heard where they are increasing rents up to uh three hundred dollars extra on people who are um renters. And they're putting them in in a very terrible situation, saying that, you know, there's a three hundred dollar increase in one month on your rent and you have to find someplace to go. Is there some kind of protection for folks who are, you know, put in the in this situation where it seems like they're being cannibalized because of what's going on with COVID? And is there some kind of consideration being made for folks like that? And what are some of the remedies?
So my understanding is that the current version of this bill does not address those. Um this is purely a a eviction and foreclosure after the COVID emergency is 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 ended. Um that the 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 executive order provisions of the governor are the ones that are in in sway right now. Um I I certainly think that I have not heard that, but it's certainly something worth researching um and and looking at at. Um we have some, a number of people in town who are who are strong housing advocates, and I think that's something to to look forward. Um I I I just don't know that that's in this particular bill. Um and I and and but I'd be happy to to report back to council after doing some research on that.
I would appreciate that, because folks here in town who are going through a very, very difficult time. And if you have landlords that are putting additional pressure on them, you know, where they're just eking through for survival, it's it's make it very difficult. And whatever that it is that we can do to help and to provide information, that would be most helpful.
Absolutely. And I I I will certainly learn what I can and report what I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Tara, did you have?
With your bill going forward, maybe we should put something out there saying Highland Park is in support.
Okay. Tara?
Yeah, is aren't there laws protecting how much um a landlord can raise your rent each time you renew your lease?
That's what, yeah. That's what I was gonna say. Terry, remember, we received that and I had asked about rent control.
Well, I what I can report, our rent control, and it's actually called a rent leveling ordinance, and I'm not exactly sure of the distinction, I'm sure there is one, um is very outdated. I've already been talking with borough attorney about revisions. Uh it's something that the mayors asked for through the amend committee and is slated for discussion in the near future, uh not just because of COVID, but other concerns we have about that that have emerged in the last couple of years. So right now, we don't really have rent control in the traditional way in Highland Park.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure the state has laws with you can only raise a certain percentage.
I'm not quite aware of Tara. Um it's it's, I think, governed by the locality. Um and our ordinance is is out of date. I may be mistaken. Maybe there are some things, some incident, incident, instances where the state has a role and and sets that policy. But as far as I know, based, and Ed, maybe you could speak to that, because we have talked, it's been a few months since we talked about it. Um but um to my knowledge, it's something the borough has to tackle um with respect to the properties in Highland Park.
I was just, maybe it's just because I have um rental assistance that they normally.
Perhaps if you get any kind of subsidies, depending on where they come from, there's rules that would govern what kind of increases through vouchers and other sorts of things. Um but I'm, we're talking about the borough's rent control for just, you know, typical apartments, you know, with no.
Um uh could I, could I, I don't, I again, I don't want to go out of parliamentary procedure or or our rules or anything like that. And I don't know if this is possible, but I I did notice that one of the participants that we have um in in that is still on the line is actually a housing expert and works in this space and may be able to answer some questions for us on this. I I I know we normally don't ha- have that, but Matt Hirsch is 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 uh still a participant. And if if we have questions, he may be able to to answer some of those, because he he works as a housing advocate. But again, I I I understand that's not our normal procedure for for this, so.
Would the council, uh because we don't have to vote, it's a work session, would the council like to hear from uh Mr. Hirsch with regard to whether there are generally or specifically rules or laws that control the amount of rent increases that a landlord can grant?
I would.
I would, I I wouldn't mind hearing. I I would like to hear.
All right. Hopefully, hopefully Matt Hirsch is ready to be unmuted. This is a rare turn of events. Uh Matt, I'm.
Mr. Hirsch?
Unmuting you if you are available to speak to the group.
Uh hey, everybody. Um how are you? Um I may not be able to answer. I can speak, I can speak on the bill. First, I just want to, I mean, thank you so much for considering support of this bill. Um this, uh you know, we uh have about, you know, even though for, even though uh foreclosure and um tenant evictions are suspended under Governor Murphy's uh Executive Order one zero six, um foreclosure filings can still can can still occur. And there are about fifteen thousand that have taken place. Um and uh we estimate that, you know, um that that there are uh that 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 there without without this and other protections, that there will be considerable amount of um uh foreclosures and evictions that could put um undue strain on our social services, uh increase homelessness, uh and have truly adverse uh effects on uh lower-income communities and and rental communities specifically. And in Highland Park, as we know, um the rental community is about sixty percent. Uh so so this type of bill would have a direct uh benefit to Highland Park. And it's the only, um I'm really pleased to hear that nobody has actually asked about landlords, but I should just note that um it's it's the only piece of legislation in place right now that ensures that a landlord does uh um commit to some type of repayment plan. Uh because right now, there is there 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 is nothing uh in place right now. So the bill was, has been very carefully vetted by Assembly leadership, uh as as Councilman Hale noted, um a- as well as the governor's office. So yeah, it's just uh this this final um step through the Senate, uh hopefully at the end of the month. Um and uh and we'll see where that goes. As far as as far as rent increases, it does vary from town to town. And I know that Highland Park does have a rent leveling ordinance that's being uh reconsidered um or reexamined right now. Um but any note, I mean, in New Jersey, generally any notice of a rent increase that is not in writing and not um uh not kind of bifurcated, meaning that it ends the old lease and it begins a new lease at a higher rate, is not legal. So um if there is, if there's any instance of somebody um experience a rent increase um mid-lease, uh you need to report that. Uh you can report that on um uh to the tap to to Highland Park, but also there is a state uh website, I don't want to get this wrong. Um it's uh covid nineteen dot N J dot gov. And that'll give all of the most uh recent information related to um uh tenant foreclosure, tenant and homeowner rights related to inability to pay um COVID-impacted residents uh and so forth. Um uh and a landlord has to has to, and and at the at the end of a lease, a landlord uh must provide the tenant with a written notice uh and a notice of a rent increase. Generally speaking, it should never be more than four percent. Um but uh of course, there are instances where where those things are abused and they need to be reported. Uh so it's really important that homeowners and tenants are are really their own advocates. And um I know the town has done work with New Jersey Citizen Action on um on unfair housing issues. Uh this is an organization who has who has, uh one of their offices in town. Uh so fortunately, we have resources here that can, you know, uh address these questions head-on.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Any questions, Matt?
Oh, I disabled him.
Thanks, Matt.
I can re-enable him if you want.
Oops. Councilman, all right, there you are, Matt. Matt, any?
That's it.
From the Assembly bills.
No, we're good.
Um, you have the eighty-third anniversary. Hello, are are we there?
Uh no, you're breaking.
You're you're a little bit RoboTronic there.
Everybody froze or around frozen.
No, you're you're frozen.
Yeah, I'm getting the unstable connection. I don't know if anybody else is. The ADA thirtieth anniversary?
Yes. So um I had circulated around the draft um resolution that was discussed in um the Health and Human Services meeting, um recognizing the thirtieth anniversary of the ADA. Um thank you, Councilwoman Fine, for sending that over. As you guys know, I have Universal Access, who's currently looking for a new chair.
They have a new chair.
Who's currently looking for a new chair? Um.
They have a new chair, Stephanie.
Okay, wow. So um so it's, you know, it's simple. If you guys have any questions um or any comments on the draft, Joan, I believe, sent it out already. Um you can just shoot them over to me. Um if not, I um plan on uh we putting it on at the September first meeting for a vote.
Stephanie, the only thing I thought about was, um and I don't know if it needs to be added in there, but um from Universal Access, just reaffirming the borough's commitment to uh en- ensure access in any public works project.
So what did you say?
No, just to reaffirm the borough's commitment to ensuring of the utmost in access uh in any of its public work projects.
Okay, got it, yeah.
Okay, great. Um I like it. It was a good resolution, Stephanie. I would definitely support that on the next agenda. So can we move that to the next agenda, everyone?
Yes. There.
Okay, great. Um Stephanie, you also have twenty-twenty Columbus Day.
Sure. So um over the last few years, we've seen a significant increase in explicit white supremacy organizing organizing activities, both in our community and in the country. Also, as a society, I think we have started to connect the dots about the ways that white supremacy shows up in the most explicit ways and also in concealed ways, like in the monuments and statues that we create, and then the people that we name our landmarks after and the holidays that we celebrate. Recent years have seen a number of states and cities move towards uh towards observing some form of Indigenous Peoples' Day and away from honoring Columbus. Now, I understand Columbus Day is associated with a tie in, is uh associated with a tie in American heritage, and this. And this would in no way diminish the value of the Italian-American community. So what I'm proposing or asking for us to adopt a proclamation that would recognize the Indigenous Peoples' Day, this would be a small step, I think, in a new direction. And my hope is for next year that the borough can move towards a more permanent and more institutionalized recognition of the history from both Native Americans and Italian-Americans.
Do you have any kind of proposal or resolution?
Uh, no, it would just be a proclamation, it would just be a proclamation observing, what did I put, recognizing the Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Do you have a date? Is that replacing Columbus Day or?
No, it will be us, this is a small step. It wouldn't be a replacement or anything. This will be a small step in us recognizing the day. We would not be replacing or removing, that would be for, we can work out something next year that the borough can move for something more permanent and more, because there, we can't celebrate both. So we're recognizing, we can't celebrate both on the same day. So I think us just recognizing the day is a small step. And then next year, we can move to something, you know, because anyway, we're not celebrating anything this year, anyway. No one's celebrating, basically, there's no celebrations going on. So it will be a proclamation recognizing the day.
Did Human Relations draft any kind of proclamation that we can take a look at?
Um, no, Human Relations have not. We can get the proclamation, but this is part of, if this is the direction we want to go in or we want to do something else. This was what I'm proposing. And then I can, then we can get the proclamation around probably for the next meeting.
Well, I would, I would want to see the proclamation and see what it intends to do first. And I'd like some feedback from Human Relations. I certainly-
Human Relations wants to replace. This is me saying, we recognize the day and we think about what we want to do permanently in future years to, for both.
I'll be blunt. I'm not going to support anything that takes away from my Italian-American heritage, which I also celebrate to freeholders every year, since they recognize the large population in Middlesex County that's Italian-American. So if we find accommodation as to both, we have talk. If you're talking about a proclamation that takes away recognition of Italian-American heritage by renaming it, I'm not going to support it. You can bring it forward, but I won't support it.
Can I say something? I think that the goal is that the native people of this country have, for years, have been overlooked and undermined, and they were never recognized as the native people. And I think when we had our meeting with Stephanie, the goal was to acknowledge the native people, to put something in place for the acknowledgement of the Native Americans. And with that, that we would, we're not saying we're taking away from the Italian-American, we would say Italian-American Heritage Day, as opposed to Columbus Day that came here and we all people of color know what happened. So I'm not saying, the conversation we had in our meeting was to say, yes, make an acknowledgement of the Native People Day and acknowledge the Italian-American Day and not necessarily Columbus Day as it has been for years, been celebrated as the great conqueror coming to the new world. And I don't have to repeat the story because we all live the story today.
Well, Elsie, don't get me wrong, I support-
Language should be put around it, and we need to have a conversation, something coming out of Human Relations. And then this can be thrashed out some more. But what Stephanie had proposed to our committee was that we should have an acknowledgement of the native people. And we should look at how, as we talk about statues of folks that were put all over the place and our people that kept us enslaved, and we have to walk by their statues, pay for their restoration to keep them, the upkeep of these things. Stephanie's saying, let's take another look at this whole Christopher Columbus statue everywhere and this day and see how we can work together and put something that would be pleasing to all.
Please don't mistake me. If you had heard my discussions over the last couple of weeks, I actually was encouraging having a week of recognition of the contributions of Indigenous people. I've represented the Leni Lenapi tribe in a number of matters, including discrimination before. My question was specifically where the mechanism that you're proposing to replace the terminology and the day, Columbus Day, without infringing upon the recognition of my heritage. The very first Columbus Day was actually organized as an Italian festival in 1792. And it's been an Italian heritage celebration that just happened to wrap around Columbus. In all through the 19th century, people wanted to get rid of it because it was considered a Catholic holiday because the Italians celebrated it, and there were prejudice against the Catholics being recognized. I am not opposed to having a much broader-based recognition of our Indigenous people in Jersey. I think we need to do a lot more. My question is specific to the Italian-American heritage recognition. And I would need to see that that accommodation is made and something more than a mere proclamation that recognizes the history of the tribes who were here before this area was settled is done educationally so that people begin to understand it, as I have in representing certain branches of Leni Lenapi. That's my concern. I don't see anything that shows me how that happens.
Well, we can do that. Historic Commission has, in the past, has stepped up and said they would work. Is that, I don't know if they're still open to that, Josh, but, you know, I wanted to know where we, is this okay? Or, you know, a lot of towns are just replacing the day, but we know, you know, this is not the direction we wanted to go in. So, I mean, a proclamation is not a resolution, is not an ordinance. We do proclamations on the color blue. So, I mean, come on, guys, like, we can put some teeth in-
I want to see it, Stephanie. I want to see the proclamation before the next meeting. And if it meets what I think, where Elsie's going with this and where I'm going this, I see no problem with it, but I want to see it first.
Okay. We don't vote on proclamations, by the way, right?
No, we don't, but if we wanted was to do something to truly acknowledge the Lenapi tribe down at the environmental center, where we have our environmental center, that there was the Nine Lenapi tribe, that's where their settlement was, where we now have the environmental center here in Highland Park, right on the River. You know, so if we want to dig, we can-
Right on the banks of the river where it lowers down.
Or something like that. But I hear what Phil is saying. Phil is saying that, let's show me something in writing of how we're going to treat the renaming or the rephrasing of the word Columbus Day, not make it say Columbus Day, but Italian Heritage Day. Something like that.
Fine. I want to see the whole program. I think I'm entitled to see the whole program.
We all are.
Okay.
Back to work, Stephanie. We can get back to the drawing table and take a look at some-
Yeah, yeah, I'll have-
And we could take a look at what's happening out there and come up with something.
Yeah.
Okay, any more comments?
I'll have HRC. And Josh, it's, do you think Historic Commission is still interested?
So I would just say that since COVID, the Stark Commission has not met. Michelle, who was the chair, is trying to put something together for still in August or for September. So I can definitely look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Mental Health Ad-Hoc Committee?
Okay, I guess that's me. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm just going to-
I'm sorry you had to wait so long, Harry.
It's fine. So I'm presenting some notes from the mayor and inviting people's comment on it. In response to a few factors, a rise in attempted teen suicides in town and growing concerns about the mental health impacts of COVID-19 policies, a borough committee has been set up to foster greater support for residents struggling with these issues and greater awareness of local resources and also to increase educational opportunities on these topics. The group has met twice. All discussions are preliminary and explorative. And they have been drawing on successful experience of a Westfield program on the same topic. The committee is being led by Ruth Byer, former member of HP Board of Education and an educator. And the group that's come together has psychologists, the borough's social worker, the Highland Park Public Schools Guidance Counselor, as well as Dr. Norma Bo, who's a Board of Health representative. The mayor has spoken with Councilwoman Stephanie Kim Chohan about this, as I believe it falls in your bucket, Stephanie. And we're looking to establish this as an ad hoc committee that would formally begin its work as soon as possible about this, holding programs, sharing information with the public, offering educational opportunities. The idea is to establish it as an ad hoc committee now so that their work can begin promptly. And then to see if the group needs to be reestablished as an ongoing committee at the reord meeting in January.
I know this is under Stephanie, but I'm a social worker who works in mental health. So I would love to be involved and help out in any way I can.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
No, go ahead, because I, no, go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say, Stephanie's got a lot of buckets. And I would, I know Tara's training. I know that Board of Health is under Stephanie's purview. And so there's clearly some relationship with this. But I do think that we have, Tara does have some specific training in this area. And I think that's at least to be considered in some respects. I was just going to also mention, and I think this is a fabulous idea, and the first time I ever heard of this idea was from Suzie. Suzie actually mentioned the idea that we ought to have a mental health task force. And, you know, I just, I think this is something, her lasting contribution in many ways. I remember her talking about doing a significant mental health effort of some sort. And I'm not sure if this grew out of that or not, but I know that this is something that was very, very important to her. So I just wanted to point that out.
Matt, I seem to recall, and Elsie, maybe you do, a long time ago, I thought we had a mental health board. But I could be wrong, but Harry, I like Matt's suggestion. Now, this is an ad hoc committee, you know, it falls generally under a label that falls under Steph, but she's got a lot going, she's got a lot to do. Could we suggest to the mayor that Tara gets her baptism by fire with the Mental Health Ad-Hoc Committee? Stephanie's got a big grin. I see you like that idea.
Well, when I had mentioned it to Board of Health to come under them as a standing committee, and they said they just couldn't take on because mental health was just so big of an issue that they, with COVID and everything, they just couldn't take it on as a long-term thing. So that was my only comment. And the professionals on there, sometime they're talking and I get, like, lost in this all. So Tara, you'll probably have a-
Stephanie, I would love to take it.
Harry, could you just suggest that then to the mayor?
Certainly. I'm writing notes to that effect right now.
As Phil said, in the past, we had, after 9/11, we had put one together. And it was there for a number of years after 9/11. But things had gone very quiet and folks moved out of town. And there was really no major, major issue at the time. And we were, we had other programs that was put in place to help with this. So that's why it was somewhat disbanded. But I'm quite sure there's other people that are capable now to take up that mantle, move it forward. And maybe there's some of those people that served in the past that are still in town that could help out.
Well, was it a committee or a commission?
It was, it was, it was a mayor, they reported directly under the mayor.
Oh, so it was like, kind of like an advisory? So maybe those-
Advisory Commission, because right after 9/11, as you can imagine, a lot that was going on with folks. And we really needed someone to be there for folks. And so we had worked with Rutgers Behavioral Health, and we had put a lot of different things together. But then after a while, that went away when things got relatively normal. But now we're in a new normal, so it is time.
Yeah. Well, maybe, well, if they decide to keep it on a more permanent structure, we could look at those old templates or so, because it's so much easier, like what we did with Historic Commission, if you have some kind of template or foundation there, than trying to reinvent the wheel. Which probably, you have to dust that, I don't know, maybe Joan has it in like a file cabinet or somewhere.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
I'll have to check because I don't remember.
Okay, all duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Anybody else? Anybody want to report on a goal during the pandemic?
My streets are getting done. The lining is going on beautifully, you know, the street work is getting done. More street linings are going, more curb cuts. You know, it's happening and the setbacks are coming together nicely. So you're going to have much more better roads to ride on, as you can see. Hopefully, we won't get a bad winter and ruin all the hard work.
I don't know that it's a goal, but since I reached mine, when it was the implementation of the Water Management Company, which we got done by July, and thinking of adding, I mean, the last two storms plus just monitoring the tree removal, you know, the tree contracts and tree permits, I think I'm going to add in looking at a long-term examination of the real health of our street trees because we really got creamed in this storm. We were lucky, that's a relative term, the large trees that were lost, I mean, you just drive around, you see them all over. Some of our mature trees, they were on private property, which fortunately for the borough is not our responsibility, but just a terrible, terrible loss to our community and our residents. I think we need to look, as a project, a long-term, not just checking the trees out now and again when something falls, but a long-term, a neighbor on South First had her car, her Volvo crushed by a street tree for the second time in a year. Unbelievable. So I'm going to be- That's all I have. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Phil should run meetings all the time. We leave early.
Phil should run meetings all the time. We leave early, it's early. Carrie, that's our eyes.
My record is 49 minutes, my record is 49 minutes for a, a client I represent.
Oh, lastly, this.
No, you're adjourned.
Joan left.
Don't out.
I'm done.
All right, bye, everybody.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Stay safe and be well.